So let's go back.
Are you just like being called to order? So maybe some Chinese at six twenty one. Uh, virtually forward order please.
Hmm.
Jerem Rubio.
Here.
On to Ruzio.
Yeah.
On to Moreno.
Here.
Three and ten.
Yeah. So we have Lydia. But I hope, oh, I'm sorry before the going forward with that, do we have any public input?
No, in paper.
Nobody online either. Nope.
Um. Yeah, I mean, we're here. Have anything to say to our councilors?
Yeah, I'm taking two vehicle claims and we're gonna go to the second claim, which is Lydia Tray, uh, Tray Hall.
Coming.
All right. Uh, what three hundred twenty five dollars and eighty cents for a problem? My motion is to take this claim up. Sorry.
So we have a motion to take a Lydia Tray for a stuck claim, second by Council Moreno. Lydia, how are you?
Good, thank you. How are you?
Did you have anything?
Well, so I, I believe that I added all of the information requested. Uh, but if anything further is needed, let me know. I can certainly speak to the dealership to get more information.
Councilors? Thank you for that.
Yeah. Um. Yeah. Yeah. Go on. Chair, I see that could be recommended more. Age. You got. Me, who, me. Heard this claim to me. What I would. Of. Our movement. Now, our. Public. Public ability. Truth. What? Ish. And. Um, of, as an act. Of, um. Um. Maybe. The area is under attack. Just. And it's. Um.
Yes, I, I agree. Um, unfortunately, this, um, the claim, this is. Um, a road that is under rider, um. Jurisdiction. So, um, first of all, there's a three hundred dollar max for the state, right? So, um, that's the first thing you could actually claim for this. Um, but in a case like this, because it's a state road, we generally prefer that claim to go into rider. Because it's still an issue, um, but the probability is really, it's a state road, right? Um, but I'd like to ask Council Milo, did you see that on there?
No, yeah, again, I'm, I'm reading the field inspection report and we do have Chris here. Chris, I assume that based on what I'm reading, field inspection report. That this is either a road that is exclusively under the jurisdiction of. The Rhode Island Department of Transportation or there's some type of construction maintenance agreement. I assume it's the form that it's their road.
Correct.
You have the ones that are responsible. So basically no one's denying.
Right.
The fact that there's a defect here. Well, clearly there is.
Yeah.
And I don't have any reason to disbelieve what you're suggesting, that it was that defect that caused the damage to your tire. It's just that we don't have the control. We don't have the control and ownership. And legally, we can't be responsible now. State could be.
Okay.
So I would suggest that you file a claim with our DOT through their process. But I would also show them that you were not aware of the fact that it was a state road.
Okay.
Because what you don't want them to say is, well, you didn't file a claim.
Correct.
Show them. You know, and we have a timestamp, I assume.
Yeah, yeah, look good.
Yeah.
I did.
So do you have that with the timestamp on it?
I believe, so I believe that I received an email.
Okay, if not, you can reach out to the clerk's office or even us, or in the law department. And we'll make sure you get a copy of that. I would attach that to your claim. And explain that you filed within, before I say anything more. Did, did you file within the seven eight period?
Yes.
And, and you're good. So from our perspective. And you want to show that you just want. Does that make sense?
Oh, yes. I believe you would get a letter from the city clerk based on our decision as well that you could showcase. Matter of.
They'll get a letter saying that they're denying the first work that's without the proper transportation. We have, on those letters, we have contact.
Yeah, I, I put the contact information on those.
Contact first of all. And if you need the, uh, probably the claim with the timestamp, let us know. Um, if Iris can get that to you right away.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And they do follow the same rules too. So I, I can't report from viewing your crime claim earlier. What the amount and controversy is, but if they do accept liability, no problem, it's capital to three hundred.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate your time.
Well, I'm sorry you had to get.
Thank you.
I wanted to come in and meet crimes part this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilors, we have.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, no, that was great. No.
You're good to go.
Uh, directed, um, now how does this take in here? State roads is this one fixed? This path right here?
Um, if you look at the pictures that I attached, there was, it, it looked like there was some kind of pothole.
Yeah.
Or defect there and it was patched.
Still looks like.
I, I look back on, on our, um.
That was before, that was after.
That was after.
That was after the date of the claim.
But if you're in front of it, you know, you, you got a couple of small little, I don't know if that's something that. Can we reach out to them or maybe take another look and say, maybe contact them? Not too good, uh, those two.
It, it looks like there was some kind of latony cut there.
Yeah.
Um, and then I looked at the, uh, uh, pothole list.
Yeah.
Our record, we have no record of being dispatched out there to patch it, so. Um, yeah, I mean, it, it was filled, so.
Sure.
I'm, I'm the, I'm the assumption that the state went out and patched it.
All right, well, I don't know if there's something, like, you, I'm just.
But I can re, I can reach out and tell them that we're concerned with the condition of the possibly reopen.
Yeah, it just looks.
It, it just looks like this. Yeah. It's almost like a scot, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it looks like it's open, right? So, um, you know, to try to get our residents or drivers in our city not to encompass this problem again in this spot, that would be great, Chris. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I, I'll make a motion to deny and refer to, um, our DOT.
Motion is to deny and refer to Rhode Island DOT, second by Council Moreno. Um, Rick Lee Paul.
Erumio.
Yes.
Conterujo.
Yes.
On to Moreno. Yes. Read a zero.
All right, we have, I have number one, Council Moreno, which is open.
Yes, the other claim is for Joe. I think that has. And it is a. Within. Um, the shield claim, the. Ounce of eight hundred and one. Hours and sixty nine. Cents and one thousand one hundred and twenty eight. Ah. Hours and, um. About this. Sixty. Eight hundred. Cents, I. Move.
Hmm.
Big.
Thank you.
Thank you everyone. To take up, um, thank for Joe Fernandez, um, motion by Council Moreno, second by Council Arujia. Um. Thanks for our seat, Council Miles. Do you have anything on this, Chris?
There is a field inspection report that we've. Put together on this and although I, I get what you're saying, yeah, no point to heed, see. Uh, you know, somebody bothering, right? That doesn't mean it didn't happen, but notwithstanding that, this was something that we may have been unseen, but it sounds like it was Richie that was actually working.
Right, and they, and they, uh, Richie Drain is, was doing the work. Um. As the city contracted for the city. Sounds like they put all necessary signage, which I assume was to. Control the flow of traffic and. Clearly people understood it was some act of construction going on. I don't know how you. Always prevent stuff like this from happening, but at the end of the day, this was not a job that appears to me was under our.
Exclusive jurisdiction. We were out there, I assume, supervising, when I'm actually performing, am I correct?
Correct. They, they were, Richie Drain was performing the work on the direction of, um, the city almost over, you know.
So I mean, assuming there is liability, I don't see that it's our liability.
Yeah.
With that. And quickly said, I mean, I read it well, I mean, and look, uh, how there was, there was something looking on shield where it happened, how it happened. I mean, it's really, um, we had a contractor out there. I would think that, you know. My, my move would be, um, to deny the claim and refer it to the Richie, uh, Drain company.
Councilor.
The right motion is to deny and to refer claim. Is Richie Company.
Richie Drain.
Richie Drain. And that can refer to Richie Drain Company, um. Motion was made by Council Arujia, second by Council Moreno. Rick Lee Paul.
Chairman Rubio.
Yes.
Conterujo.
Yes.
Council Moreno.
Yes.
Read a zero.
Let me share. Sir. Motion is to adjourn at. Six thirty three, thirty two, I think.
Thank you. It's hard to tell. It's hard to know how you control some.
If you are currently waiting online for public input, can you please press the raise hand button at this time?
Good evening. Welcome to Pawtucket City Council on Freight Street at tonight's meeting. Uh, the first item on our agenda is public input. However, there is nobody signed up and as far as I can tell, there was nobody online. Is that correct? All right. So we will jump right into provided us late enough. We will jump right into the Pawtucket Board of License Commissions. I'll call the meeting to order. Clerk will call the roll. Here.
Here. Mr. President, I item number one, I call for approval of the previous minutes from September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five.
Moved by Council Rouge, second by Councilor Wilden, hand that approval be given to the minutes of the meeting of September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five as prepared by the clerk. Are there any concerns, amendments, deletions? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two consent agenda and item number three petition for license. I call for approval, starting with door to door company in door to door employee licenses new renewal by Anderson. Southern New England Windows LLC down to Victor Linghouse transfer of location Matilda Empanadas on one thousand five Main Street.
The move by Council Rouge, second by Councilor Moreno, that approval be given to items two and three, the consent agenda and petitions for license. Starting with door to door company and door to door employee license new down through the bottom of page one, Matilda Empanadas. Any discussion on the items in two and three? In that case, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item four is a petition for license entertainment and class one F one full privilege petition from Cape Verdean American Community Development to have a Kachupa festival. And to sell alcoholic beverages at one twenty High Street indoors and outdoors on Sunday, October twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five from two P M until six P M. License number E V T twenty five dash seventy four. Motion to take up.
The move by Councilor Rouge, second by Councilor Stokoviac, that we take up a petition for license for an entertainment in class F one full privilege. It's a petition of the Cape Verdean. American Community Development to have a Kachupa festival and to sell alcoholic beverages at one twenty High Street, both indoors and outdoors. On Sunday, October twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five from two P M until six P M. It'd be license number E V T dash two five dash seven four. The motion is to take up Council Stokoviac.
Uh, they're not here, but um, it's fine. It's indoors and outdoors. It's um, four hours. Have they had this event? I know we've had. Is this a, yeah, I can't remember if this is, it sounds familiar, but. Okay, but they've had, yeah, I knew that they've had, okay. Yeah, I've uh, moved to approve this license.
It's been uh, no, any further discussion? All right then. It's been moved by, moved by Councilor Stokoviac, second by Councilor Gregor, that approval be given. Uh, any discussion on the motion to approve? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five is a petition for license entertainment in class F one full privilege petition of Built Different Entertain, uh, E N T. For license to have a contour of shadows event and to sell alcoholic beverages at two forty nine Main Street. On Friday, October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five from seven P M until twelve A M. License number E V T twenty five dash seventy five. Motion is to take this license up.
The move by Councilor uh, Arujo, second by Councilor Rubio, that we take up a petition for license for entertainment in class F one full privilege of Built Different Ent. For a license to have a couture of the shadows event and to sell alcoholic beverages at two forty nine Main Street on Friday, October seventeenth. Uh, from seven P M until midnight, it would be license number E V T dash two five dash seven five. Uh, any discussion before I open up the discussion, I I received a phone call from Councilor Codir this afternoon. This is her district. She said she may be late tonight or she may not be able to make the meeting at all, but she had some concern about um, the midnight ending time. And that if the applicants were here, we were to ask, she would appreciate if we asked them, but I don't see the applicants here. She said in the alternative, she would prefer it to end at eleven P M. Um, is there anybody who, any discussion on that? And if not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the stipulation of it ending at eleven. Eight, eleven P M.
Okay, so it's been moved by uh, Council Rubio, second by Council Moreno, that this license be approved with a amended ending time of eleven P M. Any discussion on the motion to approve as amended? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, item number six is a petition for license entertainment in class F beer and wine. Petition of Saint Mary's Antiochian Orthodox Church for a license to conduct an annual holiday bazaar and to sell beer and wine at sixty Saint Mary Way. On Friday, November seventh, two thousand and twenty five from five P M until eight P M. Saturday, November eighth, two thousand and twenty five from ten A M until nine P M. And Sunday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty five from eleven A M to five P M. License number is E V T dash twenty five dash seventy six. Motion to take up.
Move by, uh, move by Council Rouge, second by Council Stokoviac, that we take up a petition for license for entertainment in class F beer and wine, the petition. Of Saint Mary's Antiochian Orthodox Church for a license to conduct an annual holiday bazaar to sell beer and wine. At sixty Saint Mary Way on Friday, November seventh, from five P M to eight P M. Saturday, November eighth, from ten P M to nine, eh, ten A M to nine P M. And Sunday, November ninth, from eleven A M to five P M. It's license number E V T dash two five dash seven six. Is there any discussion on the request?
No, I mean, that uh, this um, I, is this the Council of Man's district or? Oh, I might have saw it. Then it's all you. I I thought it was his before.
It used to be.
Okay, then it's all you.
Yeah, cuz this is um, it's like the one right behind, you know, yeah. Um, I moved to approve this license.
Okay.
The move by Council Stokoviac, second by Council Rouge and Council Moran. Uh, that approval be given as requested. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
You did. All right. No further business coming before the Pawtucket Board of License Commissioners make a motion to adjourn.
The move by Council Rouge, second by Council Moreno, that we adjourn before we convene as Pawtucket City.
No, not yet.
Not yet.
We're early.
We're early again.
Wow.
Rick, you're gonna have to amend your agenda. Good evening. Welcome to Pawtucket City Council meeting for tonight. Uh, before we. Before we come to order, I'd ask that everybody stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance started by Council Stokoviac. Pawtucket City Council will come to order. Clerk will call the roll.
President Mercer.
Here.
Council Rouge.
Here.
Council Codair. Council Gregor. Council Moran.
Here.
Council Moreno. Council Rubio.
Here.
Council Stokoviac. Council Wildenhade.
Here.
Eight in attendance.
Mr. President, I call for approval of item number one, previous minutes of September twenty fourth, fourth, two thousand and twenty five of the city council.
Moved by Council Rouge, second by Councilor Wildenhade, and approval be given to the minutes of the city council meeting from nine twenty four, twenty five. Any concerns, amendments, deletions, additions? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Call for approval of item number two, the consent agenda and correspondence.
Moved by Council Rouge, second by Council Moreno, that approval be given to item two, the consent agenda and correspondence. Are there any items the members would like to discuss? I am just gonna take item D myself. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item D is a communication from the chair of the Pawtucket School Committee to the honorable members of Pawtucket City Council, just requesting an extension. For reporting on the school department's five hundred thousand dollar city grant. If you remember, we uh, on budget night, we we added additional five hundred thousand time, five hundred thousand dollars for a one-time grant. Um, and it came with some reporting requirements. Uh, the first quarterly report is due and they asked if they could hold that off to give us a better. Uh, a better report at our next meeting. So I instructed the clerk's office in response to getting this to tell them that that was a reasonable request and and we'd approve it. So uh, that is it. We're on to. I think it says four, is item three there?
Yeah, item three.
Okay, there we go.
Item three is a communication from Christopher Montalto Supervisor Distribution Designs Rhode Island Energy to the honorable members of the Pawtucket City Council submitting a petition for installation of a joint pole at Montgomery Street. To be approved pending approval from the Director of Public Works. I move to file this communication.
Move by Council Stokoviac and approve? We'll just file.
Approve.
It's been moved by Council Stokoviac, second by Council Rubio, that a communication from uh, Christopher Montalto, the supervisor of distribution design for Rhode Island Energy to the honorable members of Pawtucket City Council. Submitting a petition for installation of a joint pole at Montgomery Street to be approved pending the approval of the Director of Public Works. The motion is to file a communication and approve the request. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Number four, an ordinance for the city of Pawtucket approving the issuance of water revenue bonds and notes in the amount of not to exceed fifty million dollars. For the purpose. Of financing improvements to the Pawtucket water supply system. I call for approval for second passage on a roll call vote.
Second.
A move by Council Wildenhade, second by Council Moran, that an ordinance for the city of Pawtucket approving the issuance of a water revenue bonds and notes. In an amount not to exceed fifty million dollars for the purpose of financing improvements to Pawtucket water supply system. This would be approval on roll, on second passage on a roll call vote. Is there any discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
President Mercer.
Yes.
Council Rouge.
Yes.
Council Codair. So, Council Gregor.
Yes.
Council Moran.
Yes.
Council Moreno. Council Rubio.
Yes.
Council Stokoviac.
Yes.
Council Wildenhade.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Item number five. It's um, the committee on claims impending suits returns of fallen claims and damages against the city. Jao Fernandez for. Is denied and referred to Richie Drain Company and Lydia Trejo denied and referred to Rhode Island D O T. I move to deny on a roll call vote.
Second.
I I I missed that. Was that just the first one? It was.
I both of them. I took both of them up.
Okay, and they're both denied and referred to D O T?
Excuse me. The first one is to deny and refer to the Richie Drain Company.
Richie, gotcha.
And the second is to deny and refer to the Rhode Island D O T. Excuse me.
Can we take them together, Rick? Sure, okay. Uh, in that case, the claim, the committee on claims impending suits returns of following claims for damages against the city, both with uh, recommendations to deny and refer. First is Jao Fernandez, the amount of eight hundred and one dollars and sixty nine cents, or only alternative, one thousand one hundred and twenty eight dollars and sixty eight cents. For, and that would be denied and referred to Richie Drain Company. And the other one is Lydia Trejo, uh, three hundred twenty five dollars and eighty eight cents, and that would be to deny and refer to Rhode Island Department of Transportation. Any discussion on? Any discussion on either of those denials and referrals? Clerk will call a roll.
President Mercer.
He asked to deny and refer both.
Councilor Russo.
Yes.
Councilor Gregor. Councilor Moran.
Yes.
Councilor Moreno. Councilor Rubio.
Yes.
Councilor Stokoviac.
Yes.
Councilor Wildenhay.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Before we take item six, who has, I, I think I missed item six, that's going to be Councilor, there is an item six. After six, okay, in that case.
We have.
Councilor Moran, do you have item six?
I got item six.
I do too.
Okay, then, it was originally your, your request, so would you please take it up? Item six.
The following matter was postponed at the meeting held in September tenth, twenty twenty five, and is again taken up for discussion regarding the use of current school bonding and future school bonding needs.
Moved by Councilor Wildenhay, second by Councilor Russo, that we, the following matter that was postponed at the meeting held September tenth and is again taken up, it's a discussion regarding the use of current school bonding and future school bonding needs. Councilor?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I was away last council meeting, but we had a stream, and we had a meeting before with the school department, was, we did the Zoom meeting, what was that? Couple, it was about a month or so ago.
About a month or so ago.
About a month or so ago, and President Mercer and Vice President Russo were online as well as myself, and we were trying to get clear on some of the requests that the, the school committee was making in regards to funding for schools. And one issue that President Mercer brought up was, he asked how much, I guess, was it stage two? I'm not sure what it was, stage two.
The discussion was conflating redesign with a push to build a brand new.
That was part of it.
A brand new high school, but then, in, in pursuing the construction of a brand new school, was the discussion about stage two submission.
Correct, and, and at this point, President Mercer asked the question, what was the cost associated with that? They gave us some roundabout examples without answering the question, and that's when I asked the question, how much is it going to cost? They've done two other schools, so they knew what the cost would be, and we got the answer that it was $1.1 million to turn around and do a design on a facility that might not ever happen. So, we raised some concerns that the school department was going to take $1.1 million of taxpayer revenue that was given to them and put it towards something that would never be achieved, would be essentially wasted money. And it seems like that the committee is always in a position half the time, from what I've noticed, is that, you know, we've got to make this decision, we've got to do it by this date, so we got to do it right. And they, they do it, things in a rush, and I'm not really sure if they fully understand what the ramifications are for the taxpayers in the city. And that is a concern for me. I hear from, from their chair that he's willing to collaborate, yet when we turn around and brought things to his attention and tried to get him to collaborate, it hasn't happened. And for them to continue to turn around and just continue to waste taxpayer money on things that aren't relevant, if it was to, and, and I think President Mercer turned around and put it, they, they kind of convoluted the, the idea of redesign having to be, and saying that they could use that as an option to build a new school. Redesign isn't that from what we're being told. And then, we're also being told to stay in our own lane. Well, I think President Mercer's pointed out several times that it's the school committee's responsibility to work with the administration to turn around and decide whatever funding they need, and then bring it to the council, and then the council will make those decisions, whether or not they're prudent. But I, I just think sometimes that these decisions that they're making over there, they're doing it in a vacuum that are going to cost taxpayers money, and I don't want to see that happen.
Thank you, Council. Anybody else, Councilor Russo?
So, when, when they come up $1.1 million, I mean, if, if I was sitting on that committee, you know, I'd be looking at other avenues. If they have to present something to RIDE, because it's part of what RIDE mandates for this stage two submission. I mean, is there any prototypes out there of what a school would be as one of the things that they want to propose, where they don't have to hire a project manager for $1.1 million? I mean, there's, they say that there's a need for more funding, but to throw $1.1 million to satisfy, you know, what they're supposed to submit. I would be asking the question, is there any other more cost-effective ways to give RIDE whatever they're looking for? And I would also ask RIDE, you know, we're one of five urban districts in the state. Is there any, if there's, whatever the mandate would be that they have to put in the submission, is there any funding that they could help? Being that it is an urban district. But to spend $1.1 million, eventually they're going to come back and ask for more money because they're utilizing some of the budget that they are given. So to me, I mean, i- it's, there's going to be some type of component of the facilities, but I wouldn't be going to spend $1.1 million. I'd be looking for other avenues that are a whole heck of a lot more cost-effective, so they're not taking such a large portion of money to do whatever the satisfaction is needed by RIDE. That would be the question I would be asking if I was on that committee. What is the most cost-effective way to do what you need to do? Because $1.1 million is a lot of money. And again, you know, is, if this, if this is a requirement to have whatever the facility upgrade, building, et cetera, would be, you know, I, I, I would be asking RIDE, is there any kind of funding mechanism to help with that? Being that we are an urban district. And that, that's what I would be doing, but I can't see us spending $1.1 million to do, you know, to meet whatever requirements needed. I, I think that's not a good use of the money that they've been given. And yes, I have been on that committee before, and that, that's where I would stand on that.
Anybody else? So, I'll just kind of follow up on, on both what you two gentlemen just said. It's, it's conflating two issues, as I, as I've said in the past, and it's trying to force this municipality to spend probably $100 million to build a school that we've never had a single discussion about. In 2018, the voters were asked to approve, and again, every bonding question is up to, because it comes with the, the responsibility on us, even if, if it's authorized, if it's irresponsible to encumber that much debt, we don't do it. Right, so the, the voters are relying on us not to overextend ourselves. So that was 2018. We bonded out about half of that authorized amount, and to my understanding, it's been entirely used. They thought that there was about $45 million or so that they could maybe tap into, and at that meeting attended by five members of the school, the school department, including both of their attorneys, that it was made clear that all of that $45 million they think is available has already been spoken for, not by anybody else, but by the school department, right? So that, the amount first bonded in 2018 is gone. Then we asked the voters, would you like to pivot? Would you like to hang on a second, instead of refurbishing Bo Toman and Che? Would you rather authorize the city to bond up to $330 million to build a new unified school? Those voters in 2023, it might have been 22, was it 23 or 22? But anyway, in that, that second bond for 322, that second bond for $330 million. It was not with the expectation that, yeah, go ahead and spend the, the other 115 or 117 that's in that other bond. They, they did not expect that would be done, at least not without some dialogue. So that's where we are. There has not been one moment's dialogue about whether the city, while still paying for Baldwin, while still paying for Winters, while building and constructing a $330 million high school, that may or may not even come in under budget, that we're going to just simply go out and bond another $100 million to build a school nobody has discussed. So that's, that's really the long and short of it. Nobody is saying we're not going to build a new school. Nobody is saying if RIDE could come up with some other alternative, it's not going to happen. Nobody is saying we don't want to build a new Slater, nobody is saying we don't want to build a new Agnes Little, or a new Curtis, or a new Fallon for that matter. We'd like to build them all, but we don't have the money and we don't have the bonding capacity. And we had to surpass the cap by two and a half percent this year. And that was entirely due to 4%, our entire 4% cap was chewed up, and then some with bonding, with bonding debt. So, I wanted to follow up on, on yours, and I, I see the, the Deputy Director of Administration here, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but Elizabeth, if you might, I know there was a different reimbursement mechanism for Central Falls High School. Normally speaking, I could be wrong, but normally speaking, the municipality has to carry all the costs at the outset. We bond, we pay principal and interest until, until the, the project is completed, and then we get the reimbursement, 82%, 85%, 92%. Could we ask RIDE if there is an opportunity, since they're so gung ho on fixing the educational deficiencies at Slater with a construction of a new school? Would they be willing to do the same sort of funding mechanism they did, reimbursement mechanism they did with Central Falls? I could be mistaken, I think it was Central Falls, and it was kind of a pay-go. They, they paid upfront, and Central Falls, whatever portion they were paying, they paid their share then. So there was no carrying cost, it was not until the project's complete, it wasn't, it was, it was for the life of the, of the bond, but if it's a 20-year bond, and it's a $100 million school, and we're going to get 82, 82 cents on the dollar, I mean, 92 cents on the dollar, then, yeah, then we're looking at maybe an $8 million bond, instead of a $100 million bond. If RIDE could do that, and I could be mistaken about that mechanism, but I, I believe that was the case, because I believe the mayor's office was begging for that same sort of a, a setup with the high school. So, I would just ask that, I'm not even making a motion, just ask if you might talk to the finance department, if they might talk to finance or, or school construction at RIDE, and see if that might be a possibility. But again, here we are now trying to figure out how to save them from, from throwing away taxpayer money. So, Councilor.
President Mercer, can, can I ask you a question too? And just refresh my memory, because I, I know we put this in our packet today, and I think it's the audit, it came this week. Yeah, I almost said, yeah. Yeah, getting, I'm trying to get adjusted to it, trust me. But I had this discussion too, with Janine Boski this week briefly. Our total debt service was $18 million, that's the most that it's, that's in recent years that I can remember. But wasn't most of that attributable to?
Yeah, 80, 82 or 85% of that number was attributable to.
To school construction.
And listen, we all bought into, the, the voters bought into it, we did it, we sent the bonds out, we've built two new schools now, we refurbished two others. We're not opposed to school construction, matter of fact, we're in favor of it. We were the ones who sent the bond questions to the voters twice, in 18 and 22. So, it's to, to be, to be painted as not wanting to build schools, and that, you know, that if, I'll say it, if, if my relatives were to have taught at that school, I would feel differently. I, I wouldn't feel differently. I am, I'm doing my job, as each of us are, protecting the taxpayers. But for the record, my wife taught at Slater for 10 or 12 years, and would still be there, she loved every minute of it. She would still be there had they not moved the sixth grade to the elementary schools. So, none of this is productive. They bury their head in the sand, they just say, we want, we want, we want. It is always the city this, the city has to pony up, the city has, they are the city. They've gone through a city election, every two years they go through a city election, and then after they get sworn in, they somehow think they're in some different kingdom of fiefdom where they're not responsible to the taxpayers. And they think that, that their job is to be advocates for kids. That is not the job. Yet every two years, seven people get sworn in and think that that's the job. And that's why we're in the predicament we're in. It is to oversee the schools, it is not to overburden the taxpayers. This may, it just occurred to me as you were talking, Councilor Russo, about this, about the Central Falls type of mechanism. Maybe it's not a possibility. I do know the mayor's office worked very hard to try to get it for the, the high school, but you know, here we are trying to figure out the best way to maybe make something happen, and the dialogue doesn't happen where it's supposed to. They don't come to the mayor's office and say, is there a chance we could afford? Is there a chance we could do this? How could we, how could we manage? How could we finagle? No, it's, look, we're going to do this, we're going to spend $1.1 million, and if you tell us afterwards that we can't afford it, oh well, I guess we've just thrown away $1.1 million. It doesn't work that way. You know, it just doesn't work that way. So, I suspect if the answer is no, Elizabeth, that I can't believe there is enough bonding and debt service capacity for another school while we're building a $330 million high school. So, that's all I'll say on that, you know, they'll, I'm sure they'll, they'll counter, or at least one person will counter, but that is just the reality of it. Nobody has asked if we can afford it. Not one person there has approached the mayor's office and said, can we afford it? They haven't come to us and said, if, if we need it, could we bond X amount? Because we, we are the bonding authority. So it's, it's just as simple as that, and it's, and it's, it is very simple, but some folks just don't want to listen. Anyway, hopefully that, that's a solution. It, it literally jumped into my head the minute you were talking, Counselor. But again, it shows that we, we are in favor of school construction, but we are in favor of rational and responsible expenditures at the taxpayers' expense, so. Anything else?
Yeah, I just want to say the same thing, President Mercer, that this council and previous councils have voted to support school constructions. And I remember 10, 12 years ago, before I was on this council, that you, it was supported as well, when it was presented. This, this body, this governmental body has really supported school construction. This is not about not supporting it. When you have to go over your cap, that doesn't only affect the property owners, it affects the business owners, and it affects the renters. And, and whether you're owner home or renter home, eventually as things go up, it affects the kids as well. So, we have to be really cognizant of the fact of how much we can afford, and how much we can, you know, put out to, to bond. It would be great to build new schools everywhere. We would love to do that, if we could afford it. Who can afford it? We're in an urban district, one of five. RIDE had control of Central Falls and Providence, we don't have that. One Saka doesn't have that, Newport doesn't have that. So, we are at a, you know, when we have to go above, above the cap, you know, that burdens everybody. And, and this council has had a history of supporting school construction, before I was on the council and during my tenureship here. And I know, you know, otherwise we wouldn't be having this conversation, if, if, if we're thinking about it, we're thinking of ways that something can happen, is, you know, building the school might not be the option, maybe it's, you know, we, reinventing one of the, the high schools as a middle school. Maybe there's other things on the table. But again, $1.1 million is a lot of money to, you know, when, when we know, you know, if, as it be to, to do $100 million or whatever it would be to build a middle school, I don't know if we could afford that. That, that could afford that.
And, and that's honestly the, the genesis of this discussion, is it cart before the horse, Counselor?
Oh, I agree that we already extended, in building the high school, it's a lot of money, it's already been extended, so. But my concern though, in the interim, whatever's going to be done with Slater Junior High Schools, at the fact that it's in terrible shape, and I'm concerned about the health and safety of the children and the teachers. and I'm concerned about the health and safety of the children and the, uh, teachers who have to be in that building. So, uh, if spending the 105 million to fix the safety concerns, the safety concerns, could it make the place more livable for the students and the teachers? And maybe that's what should be done or if there's some other alternative, but uh, you can't leave Slater in the condition it's in and the students and teachers in that type of condition, that that's just not right. So that's, uh, but also we have the issue with school not doing well academically. Perhaps the focus needs to be, uh, focused, you know, the present safety concerns as well as improving the academics regarding that. So yes, you, uh, you know, you put these, these kids in a brand new school, that's all, you know, that, that's great on a temporary measure, but if you don't change, if you don't improve the academics, just being in a new surrounding, it's not going to change the facts that you, you're not doing well academically. And that's really what a school is about, is teaching the kids and making sure they're performing academically. And that concern should be paramount along with their health and safety. So.
I'll just follow up on that. I, I know quite a few teachers, I've spoken to quite a few over the last few weeks, few months. And that's exactly, you know, what they're saying is, you know, it's, it's about the academics first. A shiny building is not going to change anything. Take any teacher who's probably 15 years or more, at some point they probably taught in a trailer, you know, when schools were overcrowded. I think that was going on councillor Russo, when you were, when you were on a school committee. They're, they could, they're confident in their abilities that they could, they could teach in a phone booth. You know, and I think that's, we're fortunate to have that type of quality teacher, the majority of the teachers in, in Pawtucket. I get your point councillor. Everybody would like to build a hundred and five million dollar school. But, you know, I'd like to put a in-ground pool in my backyard. Can't afford it. If you just, if you can't afford it, you can't afford it, you can't afford it. Be wonderful, wonderful to have, but if you can't afford it. And then we put that, well, then what about Curtis? You know, that's close to 100 years or what? Where does it stop? At some point, we are the bonding authority, we are the taxing authority. We have to determine whether or not it is responsible to do it. That's it. There has to be a dialogue, but you can't say, I'm going to do it. It doesn't really matter. And I'm going to start by spending a million dollars of taxpayer money to just see where we land. Councillor.
Have, has there been discussions about using 1 million dollars to just get even some of the primary things done for safety concerns or AC concerns or stairs? Or I know there's, my nephew goes there, so I know a few things that are happening there. I mean, I feel like that a million dollars could do a lot there in the interim for just some of the minor issues versus what you're saying that they're going to be using it for.
That's it. It's, right now it's an all or nothing. I, I want, and it's really I, there's one person saying, I want you to build us a school.
Okay, so there has been no like option B, C, D, anything?
So in the email correspondence that you guys were, uh, on, the council leadership made it clear that we understand that it used to be called transformation, now it's called redesign, right? It's always come with some level of, of capital improvement, you know? Yes, that, that is a logical starting point.
Yeah.
You know, how can we afford to? Is there a little bit of bonding capacity for 1 million or 4 million?
Yeah, for like the more buyer of things.
But that is not, that's how the, that's how it should work.
Yeah.
Instead, it was zero to 60. It was, this building needs to be replaced and we're going to do it.
Okay, so there is no.
Without asking the, the mayor if it's possible, without asking us if we would be in the position to bond.
And they may be able to use restricted funding for that.
Okay, but those haven't been up the conversation yet.
Depending on what it is, they could use some of the capital reserve. The capital reserve has been thrown, has already been thrown out to, to cover a hole.
Yeah.
We had a discussion about using that capital reserve to maybe reinvest and we could increase their, their maintenance of effort, but they didn't want to do that. And then weeks later, they took that money and literally plugged a hole. It was a one and done. So I don't know what they have in their capital reserve.
Yeah.
I don't know, we, we always hear they're not, their operational fund is not adequate. So I, I don't know, I don't even know how they're going to spend, spend, pay the 1.1 million. I don't, I don't know how they're going to pay, if it's Colliers or anybody else, 1.1 million dollars. I don't know how they're going to do it.
Yeah, because I know when councillor Gregor and I walk through together, and there's definitely things that are easily you can point down and be like, okay, maybe this should be worked on right now. The whole, you know, if they don't have the money for the whole building, I totally understand that. But maybe they need to start talking about option B, C and D because education first and then just try to make it as safe as possible in the meanwhile. So when we walk through, we're like, okay, that window, this, that, you know, I mean, there's things. So that was just my question. I was like, have those discussions even come up with like, let's set of that 1 million towards of a consultant, let's maybe fix, yeah, project manager, let's maybe get a couple AC units.
I just want to go to councillor, you good? All right, councillor Gregor.
Yes, uh, so, so I fully agree. We, we did do, uh, councillor Melina, so she and I did do a, well, I had never been to Slater before, so she kind of took me around. Yeah, and, and I gotta say, I was absolutely astounded at the level of just basic things that looked like they were either neglected or falling apart that, you know, it could be fixed for a lot less than a million dollars, I would imagine. And these are health and safety concerns for the kids and the teachers. So, um, as an alternative, I mean, to just pay at one point, whatever million, just to get a design on a potential school that you don't know when you're going to build it, doesn't make sense to me. That money could be well better served to fix the, the, you know, the, uh, depressing immediate health issues, uh, to improve this, you know, the school so that at least teachers and students can actually be there and be educated without worrying about getting sick. So, yeah.
Councillor Wildername.
Yeah. What really frustrates me is, is again, I, I applaud the councillor and, and both councillors for, you know, their points of view because this is a dialogue that should be happening at the school committee meetings and not here. You know, we've been told to stay in our own lanes. Well, maybe they ought to learn what their lane is first before they start throwing things around about how they're going to spend money. I, I think the, the point that you made, President Mercer, about we, we, we asked for collaboration to turn around and make sure that it didn't affect the, the taxpayers are going over the cap. And then we, we hear about how they collaborated. They didn't do anything. They wasted a bunch of time and wasted taxpayer money. And they're still doing it to this day. I'm going to point it out because you like it or not, but here's a report that was done in December. Couldn't be filed. I still don't know if it's been filed yet, uh, because it mandates that we have to wait till the school side's done. So they still don't have a concept of really knowing where they are, what they are as far as money goes. But I fully agree that instead of talking about spending 1.1 million dollars the way that they're proposing to do it, well then look at what they did with the pot of burns and, and, and the, the green to turn around and, and get them through to a timeframe where they can discuss uses of other buildings. Because I've heard things about other schools shutting down. We're going to have, uh, dropping enrollments and certain other schools are going to, so other buildings might be available, have those substantive discussions versus just saying, we're going to spend a hundred million dollars of taxpayer money and they're going to, they're going to write, write the check out. I, I, I think that's utterly irresponsible. And I, I, I think again, I think, I want to point it out again. Learn your lane first before you start trying to tell other people what their lane is.
Councillor Moran.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I mean, excuse the pun, but maybe they need to be educated on the process as well. Cause you alluded to that earlier. I mean, they're just doing what they want to do, but where are they going to get the 1.1 million? It seems to me that there has to be a dialogue with the council and the administration to see how do you actually obtain the 1.1 million? Also, they're not being practical, they're being illogical in what they're doing. And it, and it's all about, to me, you have to have substance when you're doing this stuff and not just, it's all about show to them. You know what I mean? It's like the brand new school, let's spend a hundred million dollars so we can be pretty to everybody, even though there's nothing inside. Like again, the kids may not be getting educated the way they should be, but they're being totally illogical and, and they're not being practical. And again, they need to be educated on the process as to how they would try to get the 1.1 million. They're just kind of doing their own thing, which I don't think they can do that. I just don't think they have, they, they, they don't have the power to do that.
They, they don't have the authority to do that. They, they don't have the responsibility to bond and to tax. That rests with us. And if they were listening, they have been educated two or three different times. That meeting we talked about, the Zoom meeting, again, five people, including both attorneys for the schools, the school superintendent, the school committee chair and their, their building, uh, director of facilities, I think is the term. And the, the director of administration from the, from the mayor's office. We, it was laid out for them, what the process would be. We need, the mayor's office needs to get with bond council, get with the finance department and see if it's even feasible without coming to us next May and saying, hey, we got to surpass the cap again. Cause first off, they'd have to come to us to bond it and then tell us, okay, subsequent to bonding it, you may have to surpass the cap again. It, it's been explained. It's just been ignored. It's, it's as simple as that.
Is there any current dialogue right now between, let's say, yourself and the chair or anything like that right now presently or no?
No, because it's, it does no good. He, he continually says, I want to collaborate, as councillor Wildername said. And everything he does besides that, putting it in right, I want to collaborate, everything suggests just the opposite. It is, it's beyond frustrating. And I don't believe, and the rest of council leadership doesn't believe it's productive to be in a conversation, uh, where logic and responsibility just doesn't follow.
Do we know if the other members of the school committee see it the same way? Cause sometimes there's a, sometimes even though it's the interim, it's not the end of a term. Sometimes there's a need for a change in leadership and maybe that's something that they need to consider, you know?
I, I, I don't know. I don't know. I just know it's, it's a problem and that they're going, that all seven of them at some point, fairly soon are going to decide whether or not they want to spend 1.1 million dollars of taxpayer money that I don't know. Again, I, there's no money left, at least on the bond that's been floated already from 2018. I don't know if there's capital reserve where they can, uh, you know, it's not a pay go thing, I don't know, but it could be. I don't know that, that enlisting, uh, an opera, uh, project operation manager. Is that what it is? Like owner's project, owner's project manager. I don't know that that is something that is, um, reimbursable as, as pay go from out of their capital reserve and back in, uh, because it's a, it's a long period of time. And I don't know that service contracts are even eligible for pay go. I just, I don't know the answer, but, uh, presumably they know where they're going to get the 1.1 million. But I know where they got it from. They got it from the taxpayers one way or the other. So, um, it's, yes, and they're going to, they're going to report back to us at our next meeting on what they use it for. But my understanding is that it has, it has a lot to do with moving the Jackie Wall school over to the annex, which again is a high school moving into a grammar school building. You know, decisions made and, and dollars spent. Hopefully it's a, it's a, it's a glowing report on what they did with the, the 500,000, but.
Well, that was done as an olive branch. I wasn't a big fan, but I'm just saying, we'll see if that really wasn't, you know, does it, did it work or not, you know?
Agreed. Anybody else? Okay, councillor, did you have something besides this you wanted to speak about?
Yeah. So I just wanted to, um, announce that Morley Field has been cleaned up of like three years worth of weeds and lack of maintenance. So I just wanted to thank, uh, the DPW director, Chris Crowley and the new park, uh, director and I guess recreational director, Luke McLaughlin and also, uh, the assistant administrator, Elizabeth Marrera for, um, making sure that that's, uh, that got done. So just want to say thank you. The community very much appreciates that. So three years is a long time to, uh, it was completely overgrown. So you can actually see the field now. So I just want to say thank for that. Now we just need to know when is the park going to open? So that's moving forward. Thank you.
No further business coming? Never mind.
Yeah, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Bud Tessia, uh, longstanding business owner in, in my district. And, um, and sadly passed away from, uh, uh, some, some health issues. But Bud was a great guy. Anybody that knew him, uh, went out of his way, as, uh, it said in his obituary to turn around and just help anybody that came into his store, take the time out, to really work through it, uh, with them. He's going to be sorely missed because, uh, was a true gentleman, uh, for somebody that owned a piece of property and, and ran, ran a business and he ran it professionally. Uh, and, and his, his customers loved him as much as he did for them.
Yeah, I, I would just agree, you know, over, over decades, being in business, a small business, a hardware store, right there on Central Avenue for, for decades is a testament to running a business and being a, a, a good neighbor and, you know, helping people out as best they can. He will be missed. The, the store will, will continue. But yeah, Bud, Bud was a, a, an asset to not just District Two, but all of Pawtucket, so.
I was going to say it's all about reputation too, because not a lot of small businesses last that long as we all know. So I mean, that reputation has lived forever, you know, so.
Yeah, and people, and people elect to go there rather than go to Home Depot or even straight up to Seacock into the, the Ace Hardware. So there's a, there's a reason why it's still in, uh, in operation. It's a testament to Bud and the family. That's why it's going to continue. But, uh, yeah, I, I agree, but we, we'll adjourn in, in memory of Bud Tess.
Gary Grant.